I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special hearing session of the Board of School Directors for the Radnor Township School District. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a second public hearing on the application of the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge in accordance with the Charter School Law, Board Policy 140, and the Sunshine Act. The hearing is being transcribed by a disinterested court stenographer at the expense of the school district. It is also being broadcast live and recorded for later viewing on the Radnor Township School District's YouTube channel. At the prior hearing, the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge made and completed its presentation on its application, and we accepted public comment. As previously stated, the Board has tasked its administration and solicitor with the responsibility to formulate a recommendation for board action on the charter school application based on a thorough review of the application, information received from the applicant, and information received through this public hearing. The Board is also gathering information so that it can make an informed decision on the recommendation that will be provided by its administration and solicitor. I would like to remind everyone that this hearing is not an adversarial proceeding, but rather an opportunity for the Board, its administration, and solicitor to learn more through inquiry about the application submitted to them by Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge. The Board is entering the hearing tonight with an open mind toward gathering information, and no decisions have been made or will be made on the application tonight. This hearing will consist of a brief opening statement by our solicitor, followed by a period of public comment on the application, and then questions by our administration, solicitor, and members of the Board. At this point, I would request that our board solicitor begin the hearing.
Is that better? Can you hear me? All right. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Before public comment begins, I would like to make certain documents part of the record. Two additional exhibits. One is the notice of this hearing published in the Delaware County Times. We'll mark that as Exhibit 7, and I have a copy of that for the applicants. And the second document that we'll mark as Exhibit 8 is the December 14, 2022 email from Mr. Johnson to Ms. Goldman, myself, and Dr. Bachelor, sorry, with the subject clarification to the public comment from the public hearing on the charter application for the PMCS at Valley Forge. So with those two documents being included as part of the record, that ends my part of the statement.
Thank you, Mr. Kristofko. At this point in the agenda, we are now providing an opportunity for the public to comment on the charter school application. Is there anyone here who is registered to give in-person comment? Please come forward and take a seat in front of one of the microphones, one at a time, if you would, and then kindly state your name and town of residence.
The green button. I want to thank the Board for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Please just start, sir. Okay, your name and town of residence.
My name is Harold Wilson. I live at 111 Lucas Grove Road in Rosemont. It's been my family's home for over 70 years. My mother taught us down the street here for 30 years, and I am a graduate of Valley Forge Military Academy. I'm an old man, and parts of the world I live in are beyond me, but I do believe there's a place for military education in our society. The values and principles that are taught in such an institution are not only the math and sciences that we so often hear about today. They are also those of duty, honor, responsibility, loyalty, and teamwork, traits which are not so discussed today, but are just as important as SAT scores. They are the essence of leadership that our country and its communities need to face the future and all its uncertainty. Valley Forge has always been at the center of such an education. Numerous presidents, governors, senators, and generals have visited there to participate and celebrate its unique form of education. My old commandant of cadets, General Medenbach, used to call Valley Forge "an island," an island of rigor, an island of purpose, an island of discipline beyond the society at large. We need this form of education now more than ever. I support this charter school application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment in the room this evening? Would you kindly come forward, please, to state your name and your town of residence? Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm Gaila McCloskey. I live at 6 Harford Lane. I'm here as a resident and a taxpayer, not representing the League of Women Voters. I personally became aware of this application last week, and I understand there's been one meeting in December, which I haven't had a chance to review the video of, and I'm just here to request what the process is. I've been to the Department of Education website. It's very sparse, and we'd just like to understand what the process is so that you can get public input like you just received.
We're going to continue on with public comment. If there's anything that we can respond to at the conclusion of public comment, we will or our administration will be in touch with you after the meeting, Mrs. McCloskey. Thank you very much for making your public comment. It's noted. Anyone else? Thank you. Green button. The microphone is on, so you're good to go. Just please start with your announcement of your name and town of residence. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Norris Santo. That's Norris, N-O-R-R-I-S hyphen Santo, S-Z-A-N-T-O. I live at 424 Inverary Road, Villanova. I've been a resident of Radnor Township since 1981, and I'm a Radnor School District parent. I have several concerns about the proposed charter school. First, location. On page 53, the proposal states, quote, "PMCS has selected the proposed location located within the Radnor School District due to the availability and opportunity to lease buildings on the campus of the historic Valley Forge Military Academy and College. This will provide PMCS with the opportunity to educate cadets at a celebrated location that holds deep military history. The intended student population will be drawn from five school districts that PMCS reasonably predicts will enroll cadets. Among these districts are those described as less affluent than Radnor," end quote. Cadets from the other districts will have to commute. Although the proposal includes a plan to handle transportation, a different location might have been more convenient for many in the intended student body. The proposal emphasizes that, quote, "The school would be the only option for military instruction in public schools in the area," end quote, and continues, quote, "A tuition-free public charter school, offering a military-inspired environment, is not currently an option for students in the state of Pennsylvania. We seek to change that," end quote. In the application, the Commonwealth asks, "What other suitable locations have been considered? No other locations are mentioned." It seems to me that the Radnor location was chosen solely for the reasons stated above, the availability of the Valley Forge Military Academy campus. Second, the curriculum. The school will use, quote, "A time-proven, traditional classroom approach, direct instruction, plus a traditional curriculum, such as the core knowledge sequence. To this will be added military instruction and activities such as drills. There will also be sports and extracurricular activities." The proposal states that there are a few dozen charter schools that have some form of integration of a military program and a handful of full-time military charter schools, yet the authors do not provide references to any of these. Knowing the names and locations of these charter schools would have helped the school district and the public assess the likelihood of success. As far as the curriculum goes, we are asked to take a good deal on trust. Third, community support. Pennsylvania's charter school law specifies that the proposal must show, quote, "demonstrated sustainable support, including comments received at a public hearing." On page 55, the application asks the authors of the proposal to, quote, "document community support among teachers, parents, students, community members, institutional leaders, and others through letters of support, surveys, or other tangible means," end of quote. However, documented support is not included, and support was not voiced at the first meeting on December 13th. In conclusion, given the concerns I have stated, I do not consider school district authorization or financial support for the proposed charter school a justifiable use of Radnor School District resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment. And is there any other public comment in the room this evening? Please come forward. Again, state your name and town of residence. Thank you very much.
My name is Preston Tyrell, and I live here in Radnor. I know this came up once before, and I had meant to come to those meetings and voice my concern, but life just got in the way, and I missed it. So then I just saw this two days ago as well in the Radnor Reader, and I honestly have not had time to do a great deal of research. And if this was for a charter school, I would be here with a solid no and urge you to go that direction. But my concern is not the charter school. My concern is Option B, and if Valley Forge goes under, what type of condos will be there? What type of expansion to the golf course could be there? And I think those adverse effects on our town need to be weighed into this process. And I also don't know how far apart the charter school is from the actual school, if they're completely separate or, you know, the same thing underneath. But I think it's a chance to prevent that property from becoming condos and/or a golf course. And I don't know if anybody on the Board is a member of that golf course next to it or on the Board of Directors of even Cabrini or Eastern, who would also have a vested interest in the property, or if they're involved with any local real estate investment companies. And I think if that is the case, I think, I don't know if it's required, but if they could disclose that, if they're on the Directors of any of those organizations, because I think condos or a golf course is worse than a charter school. So oddly enough, I am finding myself here in support of the charter school, and that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tyrell. Is there any other public comment in the room this evening? Please feel free to come forward again. I think you all know the drill at this point. Thank you.
Paula DeLonge from Wayne. And like my predecessor, preceding speaker, I'm a little bit naive about some of these issues. I just have a very curious question of, in what way Radnor gains by having this school? Is there any benefit to this community in having it? And a question about whether there's been a needs assessment of some kind to learn if anyone in Radnor has an interest in attending such a school. That's all.
Thank you very much for your public comment this evening. Is there anybody else in the room who has a public comment to make? Seeing none, Ms. Hanley, is there any, have we received any recorded public comment? Okay. Five recorded public comments. Thank you.
Sally Saunders, 120 Lucas Grove in Grinmark. I have three concerns about the proposed charter school before you, which touch primarily on curriculum and the learning environment. The proposal seems to reinvent the wheel in many ways, doing what Radnor has done well for a long time. For instance, the new school will stress leadership, and the implication was that Radnor students have leadership opportunities only in clubs and teams. That's not true. There's group work in many, many classes. Leaders arise for group work. Labs, many leaders work in labs, and there are units studied on leadership. So this is not simply confined to clubs. Second, the new school will have a focus on Western civilization. Radnor does this already at a very high level. In grades six through 12, there are three years of world cultures, including Western civilization, three years of American history, government, and economics. The new school will offer certification in four areas such as cybersecurity, web design, games design, public safety. The vocational technical program does all of these and 17 more. Radnor does what it does at a very high level, testing in the top 1%. 97% of students graduate from the school, which indicates a high level of achievement and confidence. The new school will have, the charter school proposed will have a graduation rate of 85% about the state average. Radnor's doing well. What is unique of the proposed school is the military model, but the fact that there is no junior ROTC at Radnor or within 30 minutes would seem to indicate a lack of community interest in that model. Second, the proposal seems to look backward. Little mention of diversity in curriculum. Clearly, the new school will be close-minded about issues of sexual identity. The student will be called by the pronoun on his birth certificate. And all of this is strange in light of how much the military has to face in the future of fighting in foreign countries, integrating women, integrating homosexuals, et cetera. Lastly, this proposed school, although it talks about traditional curriculum, traditional literature, is not traditional in the larger context of American education. There are very few taxpayer-funded military schools in the United States. It's not a Western tradition either. There are none in France, one in England. It is common in Eastern Bloc countries and in Russia, but it's really not part of the American tradition. So to speak of it as traditional is true only in a very limited sense. These three things make me concerned about the new proposed school. Thank you.
This is Sarah Carroll from the Villanova section of Radnor. I'm calling to comment on the charter school application, and specifically, I want to raise a concern about the lack of financial capacity on the Board of the charter applicant. The applicant is a newly created entity, and the application submitted in November included resumes for five Board members. They each appear to be accomplished in their fields. However, and this is notable for an applicant proposing to run a school with almost 1,000 students and a $17 million annual budget, none of the Board members has professional experience in the fields of education, or finance, or accounting. And the Board members of the applicant entity would have the legal fiduciary duty to oversee the management of those millions of dollars in public funds and to know that appropriate accounting controls are in place. That fiduciary duty, that responsibility for fiscal oversight is not something that a Board can contract out or delegate. It rests with the Board of the nonprofit entity that would be granted the charter. Among other things, that duty would include overseeing the contractual relationships with the applicant's two primary partners, the first being the $3 million landlord-tenant relationship with Valley Forge Military Academy, and the other being the $1 million annual operating contract relationship with the Arizona-based for-profit management company, Charter One. So as it is, as the application was submitted, it doesn't appear that the Board has the professional experience to carry out those responsibilities. In addition, the Philadelphia Inquirer, in an article just published on December 24th, reported that the application was initiated by the management company, Charter One. And I'll quote two sentences from that article. The first says, quote, "The company Charter One initiated the latest application," said Joshua Johnson, the Chair of the Board for the proposed charter," end quote. And a little bit later, quote, "A retired U.S. Army Green Beret who now works for a leadership development firm, Johnson, who lives in Carlisle, said he was contacted by Charter One to serve on the Board," end quote. That reporting that the Board Chair was recruited by the management company, combined with the fact that there isn't educational, or financial, or accounting expertise on the Board, makes it feel like the nonprofit applicant entity was set up as a proxy or a stand-in entity for the for-profit. And I don't know charter school law myself, so this is a question for RTSD lawyers, but at what point is that a violation of PA charter law when the applicant is nominally a nonprofit, but the real control is held by a for-profit management company? I want to quote one more sentence, and this is from the PA Department of Education website, quote, "In the event that a for-profit entity plays a role in the establishment of a charter school, a charter applicant must further demonstrate that the charter school's Board of Trustees will retain real and substantial authority over the operation of the school, educational decisions, and staff," end quote. So again, with this application, it feels like the management company, rather than the nonprofit, is in a position to have the, quote, "real and substantial authority." So I will stop there. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you to the RTSD Board and Administration for your due diligence.
Hi, my name is Carol Sulcoski, S-U-L-C-O-S-K-I. I live in Wayne, Pennsylvania, and I've been a Radnor resident for over 20 years. I'm calling with regard to the Valley Forge Military Academy charter meeting. My public comment is as follows. I want to point out that the discrimination policy that they purport to have is narrower than the one that the Pennsylvania State and Radnor has with regard to trans students, given their history of accusations of sexual abuse and harassment. This is troubling. Number two, no discussion has been made about their extensive past reports of sexual abuse, hazing, physical abuse, drug use, and violence. It is improper to share a campus with public school children if that kind of stuff is going on, and they have not addressed it. There is, they have acknowledged in other materials that this site was selected solely because it's the Military Academy and not because of any reasons specific to Radnor. They have made no showing that there is a public need for this or sufficient interest in people attending. And they made a misstatement in their materials. There is one public charter school, at least in Philadelphia, that exists now. Their company that may be doing the management, ALA, has had allegations of financial benefit to its owner. That needs to be investigated. And they have made no showing that there's anything about their plan that will improve pupil learning, but rather this is an attempt to inculcate a certain mindset about military behavior. Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Staub. I'm a resident of Radnor Township in the Wayne section of the township, and I'm also a parent of a student at Wayne Elementary School. I'm calling in reference to the January 17th special meeting regarding the charter school application for the school, proposed school, at Valley Forge Military Academy, and I was calling to urge the Board to vote against this proposal for largely the same reasons that you rejected the prior proposal back in 2021. I really don't think that the township or the school district should be in the business of subsidizing a private school like Valley Forge Military Academy that's had well-documented abuse allegations against it over the years and, in general, seems to be failing and selling off more and more land in an effort to try to balance its budget. And this application appears to me with its $3 million annual rent payment as an attempt to have the school district subsidize a private school that is otherwise not able to meet its own budget. Additionally, I have concerns about the comments made by Joshua Johnson that were published in the Philadelphia Inquirer regarding the gender identity of students, and I would encourage the Board not to approve a school that's going to be funded with public dollars when that school will not be recognizing students' gender identities the same way, in the same manner that they would be recognized if those students went to any of the six schools, excuse me, five schools within Radnor Township School District. So again, I would just encourage the Board to, strongly encourage the Board, to reject this charter school proposal, again, along the same lines as you rejected the May 2021 application as well as for the issues regarding gender identity and whether that's going to be acknowledged by the school. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
I'm Roberta Winters, a community member and retired teacher who lives at 326 Williams Road in Rosemont. I'd like to thank the Board for providing remote means to address the potential charter school to be housed at Valley Forge Military Academy. Valley Forge Military Academy has a long tradition shared with Radnor and pre-different Townships. The institution, however, is currently experiencing a need for revenue. While the use of the facility may provide necessary income, I do not believe that a charter school is in the best interest of our community. Charter schools in our Commonwealth are generally exempt from the requirements of the school code and other laws that apply to our local school district. This creates an uneven playing field and reduces performance expectations. As an educator and a taxpayer who will continue to contribute to this operation, I believe it will fail to provide the accountability our community expects for both student learning and fiscal practices. Money often corrupts the best of intentions. Unfortunately, those who operate charter schools have been known to get rich at the expense of taxpayers and students. One approach has been to attract students with special needs or label those who enroll as requiring special services covered by special education provisions. Although these added services increase the financial support for the charter, they simultaneously withdraw significant per-pupil expenses from local school districts. This has created financial challenges for traditional public schools while meeting the needs of all students, not just those who opt to attend a charter school. Our community does not want to sacrifice the learning of our own youth in our excellent schools for those who choose to attend a potential charter school with an unknown track record. Oversight of a charter school within a school district's boundaries creates a burden on already overwhelmed staff. If this charter school were authorized in Radnor, our administrators and staff would be responsible for ensuring that it's operating in compliance with its charter, the charter school law, and other applicable laws. Our personnel can only juggle so much. Now sensitivity to the needs of others is important, be they financial or educational. I also know that educational innovation through a charter school venue can make a difference. However, the Radnor Township School District needs to continue to build on its legacy of excellence. We have opportunities for students in ways too numerous to mention to develop leadership both within and beyond the confines of our classrooms. Internships and vocational training provide guidance and opportunities for real-life service. For example, the Radnor Fire Company even offers junior members, studentship for 16 and 17 years old. While a charter school may bring financial revenue to Valley Forge Military Academy, I do not believe it is in the best interest of the community because of its lack of accountability, the potential for financial mismanagement, the additional burden on our professional staff, and the possible reduction over time of educational opportunities for Radnor students due to the siphoning of the funds for those enrolled in charter schools. Again, I thank you and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment section of the meeting, unless there's any other public comment in the room that has not come forward.
I have time to say something.
Yes, absolutely. Come on up, please. And because you came late, I'll just remind you what I reminded the And because you came late, I'll just remind you what I reminded the others is kindly just press the green button in front of you to turn on the mic and give your name and town of residence. There's a four-minute public comment limit.
Thank you. Thank you. And I don't think I'll take that time. My name is Kevin Dow. I am a resident of Radnor Township. I live over at 754 Darby Paley Road. I have two children in the district, one at Radnor Middle School and another at Itham Elementary. I really appreciate this opportunity to be here and speak on this matter, as I have been engaged in educational, early, particularly early education in my career professionally. I wanted to come here and adamantly oppose the district's consideration of a charter school at Valley Forge Military Academy. I would convey the same comments that we have just heard on the phone and specifically point to, one, the decision that was made last year, pointing out to all of those particular reasons. I think that it is important that we don't lose sight that those things have not yet been addressed, in my opinion. I think there are longstanding and unresolved issues around the sexual abuse allegations that occur at the Valley Forge Military Academy. It gives me great pause to have someone like that running a school in our community. The inconsistency between school policies with that of the Radnor other schools, particularly around how we work with and identify our gender identities and all of those dynamics. There are more than just that. Those are just one example about the inconsistencies in the policies. I also feel concerned for the administrative burden that will be placed on the district's staff and the administrative staff in maintaining and operating and making, ensuring that the charter school is managing and performing as expected or as should be. Lastly, I think that the management concerns that have been indicated about the proposed operating company for the school is of concern for me. I'm not well-informed, as many of you all may be, but in the time that I have learned about this situation and delved into the details for which I could get as a concerned parent, informed professional, it gives me great pause. And I would ask that you not approve this application. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. And is there any other remaining in-person public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you, everyone, both recorded and in-person public commenters. And at this point, I will now turn to our district administration and solicitor to ask questions about the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge's application And I guess, Mr. Kristofko, are you going to facilitate introductions in this part of the hearing?
Yes, so would the representatives from the Pennsylvania Military Charter School please come forward and take a seat at the table, the ones who are going to be responding to questions. If you could just briefly introduce yourself, and then we'll begin with the questions. Thank you.
Also, do the limitation of the microphones and to enhance the ability for everybody to hear your answers, if you would kindly pull the microphone towards you when it's your turn to respond, we would greatly appreciate that.
Good morning, Joshua Johnson, board member for the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge.
Good evening, actually, but...
Hello, Bob.
I happen to be Bob Mensch on the Board of Directors for the charter school.
And my name is Michael Way. I am with Charter One.
We're going to start out with some questions about curriculum. On page 23 of your application, it says that math instruction at PMCS will utilize a program such as Eureka Math. And on page 28, it says that PMCS will use Eureka Math or other similar conceptually-based math curriculum. Can you identify where in the application it states what math curriculum will actually be used?
What were the pages that you mentioned?
Twenty-three and 28.
Please make sure, again, that you circulate the microphone. I apologize, we don't have more available. The system only holds so many, so just please make sure that whoever is responding has the mic in front of them. Thank you.
I can see where that shows a little ambiguity, but I'll tell you for a fact that we plan on using Eureka Math.
Is Algebra II the highest-sequenced math class you're planning to offer?
Microphone on again, please. In fact, you may want to just leave it on so you don't have to remember to go on and off. Thank you.
No, it'll go all the way up through the calculus.
Can you let us know where it says that in the application?
I... One of the two pages you've referenced, I don't see it either. Hopefully, there's an opportunity to provide an addendum as we go forward to correct any errors we may have had in the submission.
On pages 23 and 24, it says that our science curriculum to include programs such as CKSci at grades K-5, OpenSciEd at grade 6-8, and CK12 at grades 9-12. Can you identify where in the application it states which science curriculum will actually be used?
That is the curriculum, OpenSciEd, for those specific ones.
Okay, so not such as those are the...
Those are the actual curriculum maps.
On page 27, it says that PMCS plans to use the Core Knowledge Language Arts curriculum for grades K through 5. Since Core Knowledge is not state-specific, how will you ensure the curriculum is aligned to Pennsylvania core standards, and how do you plan to address any misalignment?
That's a great question. We are actually in the process of pulling the curriculum maps of Core Knowledge and the requirements of the state of Pennsylvania, and you're correct. We, at Charter One, we do operate schools in multiple states, and every state's a little bit different with regards to what they require from a state's standards. And so currently, our academic team is pulling back the maps and filling in the gaps, if any, of where those would need to be. And so currently, at Charter One, we have an academic team of roughly 12 individuals that work full-time in the academic and curriculum department that are making sure that no gaps are being missed.
Where in the application does it mention or identify the language arts curriculum which will be used in grades 6 through 12?
Do you have the answer to that question? Because if not, it is because that we are currently looking for curriculum that matches the Pennsylvania state's standards on that.
On page 29, it says that we, quote, "We plan to utilize Core Knowledge History and Geography for kindergarten through 6th grades or other similar program that focuses on primary source documents." Can you identify where in the application it states which history and geography curriculum will actually be used?
Okay, that's Core Knowledge.
Where in the application does it mention or identify the history or geography curriculum which will be used in grades 7 through 12?
So Core Knowledge is built through to K-8 and then 9 through 12. I would need to get back to you on that with the academic team. The correct answer would be it depends, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. Where in the application does it mention or identify the economics or civics and government curriculum which will be used in grades K through 12?
As far as specific curriculums for the economics and the macro and the micro, I'm not specific. I know we have used HMH in the past and Pearson.
Where in the application do you identify what core texts and materials will be used in each grade level?
Could you be more specific with regards to core text and materials?
I guess the foundational instructional materials, could be textbooks, could be novels, could be...
Core knowledge sequence.
Not fiction.
We didn't catch that because you were drinking some water.
Sorry, the Core Knowledge sequence.
In the application, page 12, item 3, you stated that PMCS, quote, "will emphasize Western civilization and promote cadet engagement with traditional literature." Is this part of your curriculum?
Correct.
Does your application include any discussion of teaching world history beyond the discussion of Western civilization?
Yes.
Could you let us know where that is?
It would be in the curriculum maps, and if the curriculum maps are not required or provided for this, we can get those to you.
On page 13, in the second full paragraph, it states, quote, "Through reading, analyzing, and studying classic literature along with other primary source documents," end quote. Where in the application does it identify the classic literature PCMS will require students to read?
Again, I don't know if we're as specific. Is this on?
It is on, yes.
But we can get the specifics for you with the curriculum maps. Our curriculum maps have everything within those, several hundred pages worth, but we can get those to you.
Thank you. Where in the application do you plan for how PCMS will differentiate instruction across grade levels and subjects?
How are we differentiated? That's...I will try and be brief, but through the K-6 model and going up through 7-12, we would utilize a direct instruction model where teachers are leading the class with a well-thought-out lesson plan. Students' desks are facing forward, listening to the...and engaging in with the lesson. As they go up in grades K through 12, you'll start seeing the implementation of the Socratic method being used more often. Depending on the class, especially once they get into 7th through 12th grade, you'll see that we might angle off from direct instruction depending on the type of class. In the app, you'll see that there's entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and stuff like that. Those are a little bit more project-based in their foundation. And so when it comes to the overall school day of the student with the specials that we provide as well, Monday through Friday, along with the, I believe, the seven periods a day, 7 through 12, once the students are able to choose their own schedule, you'll notice some unique offerings such as entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and then everything that the military program would offer as well. Thank you.
What is RACE?
RACE is something we're extremely proud about. It is Charter One's intellectual and curriculum. It's our personal curriculum, character curriculum, that we implement at every school that we manage. It stands for RACE. RACE stands for Respect, Accountability, Integrity, Service, and Excellence. And it is, honestly, it's the special sauce that if you were to walk into one of our schools, you would definitely feel a difference, and it's a good feeling. And when you're able to walk into a school and grab a student and ask them how they're doing and what they're thinking and how they're feeling, and when that student says, "I know my teacher loves me," that's where RACE comes from. And that's what we try and implement every day. There's a whole curriculum that is given to every teacher that is hired, and they are taught to teach the RACE curriculum throughout their teaching. So a math teacher is able to implement RACE, the RACE curriculum, throughout their math instruction. A history teacher is able to implement RACE through their history lessons. And on top of that, there's a leadership course in the upper grades, and there's also a leadership special every Wednesday morning as well for the younger grades.
Thank you. Is PCMS purchasing the RACE curriculum from anyone?
That comes with signing on, that comes with the partnership with Charter One.
And does the application include any contract agreement or mention of this partnership?
Of the partnership between the board and Charter One.
And inclusion of the RACE curriculum?
That's a given. That comes with Charter One. It's not specifically mentioned in the actual contract.
According to the website, www.teachRAISE.org, the RACE Character Education Curriculum is owned by and for sale by the Foundation of Charter Education. Does PCMS have a relationship with the Foundation of Charter Education?
What's that website again? And what was the question again?
It's, does PCMS have a relationship with the Foundation for Charter Education?
Not to my knowledge, no.
In the application, on page 20, you refer to RACE cards. What are those?
Say that one more time.
In the application on page 20, you reference and refer to RACE cards. What are those?
Typically, the RACE cards would be...I want to make sure I'm speaking correctly here. We've been...you want to answer that?
RACE cards are a public recognition of students that have been involved in the RACE program and have done something remarkable within it.
In the application on page 16, you state that the RACE leadership program will lead to decreased behaviors. What are decreased behaviors?
You want to answer that? Apologize for the...
No problem.
...need more microphones in here. Organizations that are based off of core values have a tendency to understand what those core values are, and it drives the behaviors within, right? A core value helps establish a culture, and a culture drives behaviors and attitudes. We feel that operating under the core values of RACE is going to, especially when those core values are consistently talked about throughout every grade, it's going to create a culture of students that respect those core values and act in those core values.
And when students respect and act in alignment with those core values, what are the decreased behaviors?
Decreased...I'd be willing to say that it's those behaviors that have a tendency to create disciplinary issues with students.
Could I elaborate as well? To elaborate on that as well, it's a good day when one of the school directors comes to me and says, and I ask them how their day went, and they mention, you know, "I just can't get these young men to tuck in their shirts. It's been a tough day." That's kind of what we're going for. The vaping, the violence, the things that are so common in many of the schools across this country, that's the decreased behavior that we're talking about. And so when it comes to this, if you notice, the charter application is only 131 pages, I believe. It didn't specifically ask for every curriculum sequence, and if it did, this application would be 400 or 500 pages. So I just wanted to make that clear with regards to some of the questions that you're asking. Are very sequence and curriculum-based that the charter app has asked us to address generally, and yet we were still over 100 pages.
And back to the RACE curriculum and decreased disciplinary issues, do you have data to support that conclusion?
From our schools, absolutely, yes.
Where in the application does it identify your ESY program, your Extended School Year program?
Does it...have you read that portion? Do you know the page number?
I didn't see it.
Okay, so then, what's the ESY, the Extended School Year program?
Some students sometimes need schooling beyond just the normal...
Okay, so, yeah, absolutely. So at every one of the campuses that we manage to, any students that are academically behind are given the option, whether through intensive assistance before school is out for the school year with some type of recovery mechanism, or also the implementation of summer school to assist those school, those students to get where they need to be. Thank you.
Where in the application do you describe what AP and dual enrollment courses you plan to offer at PMCS, and are those listed anywhere?
If they're not specifically listed, they are listed in the curriculum sequence that we can give to you. The first year will be based on demand, considering that we may not fill to the level that we would like to, where we're confident that we could when it comes to student enrollment, but the first year would be based on student demand. And I would imagine after years two or three that we would have the full gambit of what any of our other Charter One managed schools would have.
Have you budgeted for teacher training for AP courses?
Yes.
On slide 12, and also on page 12 of the application, PMCS says it will offer four CTE programs: law enforcement, firefighting, emergency medical technician, and cybersecurity. The Delaware County Technical School offers a comprehensive program for emergency and protective services, as well as a program that covers computer networking, digital forensics, and IT security. How will PCMS's program differ from the Delaware County Technical Schools program?
We haven't done an in-depth analysis of that school district's programs. What we will tell you is this is the opportunity for, you know, as we provide a school of choice... What we will tell you is, this is the opportunity for, you know, as we provide a school of choice, to have those options as well as the, the specifics of a military theme. So we don't, we don't want to pull, pull back specifically and say, hey, look, we are only military. We want to say, hey, we are providing many of the same opportunities that other school districts have in addition to the, the culture and the environment that comes with a military school.
Will PMCS permit students to attend the Delaware County Technical School?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's all my questions for now. Thank you very much for your responses.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I have questions for you along the lines of students and, and, oh, I'm sorry. Sean Dukovich, I'm the Assistant to the Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. How did you determine enrollment projections?
Enrollment projections are based on the surrounding areas of student population with regards to what the local school districts could carry, as well as working with Valley Forge Military Academy, the availability of current buildings, educational facility usage as well.
Does PMCS plan to solicit current VFMA students?
They would be given the opportunity. They would be given the opportunity to. It's choice. It's purely based, if they choose to do so, they would be given that opportunity like any other student in the area.
Will Char- Oh, Valley Forge Military Academy students.
No, I know that. What was, what was it?
PMCS.
No, I know that one, too. There was another acronym in there for types of students, I'm sorry?
Just, does PMCS plan to solicit current VFMA students?
Okay, I misunderstood that question, yeah.
Will charter students share any classes with VFMA students?
No.
Do you plan to implement a lottery system for admissions? What information will you require on the lottery application for admissions if so?
If more students apply than seats available, then yes, we would go to a lottery. And we would follow all state regulations with regards to what information we would be required to receive from them in order to do the lottery.
What is the expected class sizes for each grade?
Do you want to break down by each year, K through twelve? Or do you just want the, the total numbers?
I think just generally, what is the expected class size for each grade? Do you have a range or?
Per code, per, per section or per class?
Per class.
Per class. So that is, would be roughly twenty to twenty-five for kindergarten and, and roughly kindergarten first and roughly, because we would have teacher aides in there as well, and I don't know how you would calculate student-to-teacher ratio with that, with regards to that. But as you get into second through sixth, you're looking around twenty-five to twenty-eight. And then in high school, it's completely dependent on the class that you're taking. So when you're dealing with a K-12, giving a direct class per size is, is a little, doesn't necessarily do it justice where in a, in a weightlifting class, you may have as many as thirty-five or forty or in band. Whereas in AP history, you may have fourteen. And so high school is dependent upon the class that they're taking. And then the K, K and first are typically lower, and then second through six are roughly around twenty-five to twenty-eight approximately.
On page eight, you state you plan to have upwards of one thousand cadets. Is this information correct?
Based on, depending on demand, correct.
On page fifteen, it references tracking for students. Quote, "Four tracks will provide targeted and focused academic and skill development opportunities, setting cadets up for success after the graduation," end quote. Can you please explain your tracking system and delineate the four tracks?
You said page fifteen?
Page fifteen.
Yeah, the tracks that we're referencing there are first responders, and that being police, fire, medical, and military. Those are the four tracks.
What criteria will be used to slot students into those four tracks?
I'm not sure if that criteria has been, has been hammered out yet completely. But primarily, we're, we're looking at students' desires, right? If, if you've got students that say, hey, I've, I've got an interest in law enforcement, I've got an interest in, in fire suppression, firefighting, or I've got an interest in the military, then we're going to accommodate those tracks.
Would students and parents be able to override the criteria if there were some to move up or down or change, change to the different track?
Are you asking will students be kept in a track regardless of their desires?
Would they have the opportunity to override or change, essentially?
Meaning change tracks?
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
What?
Excuse me, I think you're talking about the student. He's saying, can the parent override? Yeah. Is that right?
Well, the question actually is listed as students and parents, so essentially having the autonomy to make a change to their track.
So to that answer, yes, students and/or parents would have the autonomy to change tracks.
What plan does PMCS have to ensure compliance with Pennsylvania's Chapter 339 Career and Technical Education CTE standards?
Will you, will you ask that question one more time, please?
Absolutely. What plan does PMCS have to ensure compliance with Pennsylvania's Chapter 339 Career and Technical Education CTE standards?
We, we plan to be in compliance with, with all state and federal laws.
Does PMCS plan to contract with a vendor to ensure compliance with CTE artifacts for 339 plan compliance?
Can we ask for greater clarity on what a 339 plan is?
It's meant to identify artifacts and standards toward essentially college or career readiness for students. Planning for post-graduation secondary opportunities for students.
Is it corporate-based?
No. Not necessarily. It could be anything post, postgraduate. But 339 ensures compliance. The districts are working toward that and supporting students.
We would, we would be in compliance with that.
Would use a vendor for that, or would that be something proprietary?
I, I think we're going to have to do a detailed look at 339 and then make that determination. If it, if a vendor is required, or if a vendor is better suited, then, then we can make that call then.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lusage. I'm the Director of Student Services here at Radnor. I have a couple of questions. Where in the application do you include or identify a plan to educate the English language learners?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Where, where does it say that we're going to educate English language learners?
So the question is, is, is there a plan to, can you identify a plan that you have in your application to educate English language learners?
Are, are you asking specifically about like English as a second language?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
We will provide those services. We don't detail it out, just like we haven't detailed out the curriculum maps for the curriculum, but as you see in page twenty-one, we will provide appropriate services to cadets who are gifted, as well as cadets who are English language learners.
So you said gifted as well, because that was my next question. So your application on page twenty-one talks about a plan to identify and have a plan for your gifted learners?
Correct. Did you know that was, it was on page twenty-one?
I thought that's what you just said.
It is.
Okay, thank you. What is your projected percentage of identified special education students?
I'm going to ask, is that in the, is that in the application?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Typically, Charter One-managed schools range between eleven and twelve percent.
Okay. What personnel would be responsible for meeting the needs of the students with special needs? And if you could answer that by stating the title of the individual and like basically what their responsibilities would be? And that's for addressing the needs of special education students?
I can address that if. So in, we have a special education division, exceptional student services division at Charter One. A, a full department of those individuals that assist with that, on top of being able to provide those services from a, a unique local perspective as well. And so upon the approval of this charter application, this school would receive expertise in that area from, from that individual from Charter One assisting that, that person. Again, on page twenty-one, it'll talk to you a little bit about the, the IEPs and how we would go about making sure that we address the needs of all students. I think that it's pretty apparent in our numbers. Typically, we, we do, and I, and I, and I don't want to paint this with a broad brush, but we, we typically do have more exceptional students within Charter One-managed schools than the surrounding school districts.
Okay. What certifications will these individuals hold that are working with these students?
So ma'am, if we can, we can clarify that a little further. Charter One has, has qualifications for stu, for teachers and instructors that can work with that, and if it's outside of those qualifications, we plan on contracting with the, I believe it's the Delaware intermediary unit, the, the same one that's used within the Radnor and Tridiferent Township. Do I have that acronym right, DIU? DCIU, thank you.
Okay. What will be their level of compensation?
Competitive with the marketplace.
How many students would be on a caseload for a teacher that was working with them?
That purely depends on the level of needs, whether it's a push-in service or a pull-out service. It completely depends on the level of needs of that student. I would be hesitant to tell you exactly what that is, depending on the severity of the needs of the student.
Okay. How many students do you believe will be on a caseload for a teacher?
For special education?
Correct.
Did you find that in the charter application?
I do not believe I did.
Okay. Again, depending on the caseload, depending on the severity of the students. I'm not, I'm actually, I'm not comfortable putting it on the record. I'm not going to say that because it depends on the severity of the students. I don't know.
Okay. So these teachers that would be in for the special education, would they be a full-time in special education, or would they have other duties?
Full-time.
What related service providers will you employ?
In what sense?
So related service meaning, for example, speech and language, occupational therapy?
Yep.
Okay. Will they be full-time?
If the need is there, yes. It, it, it just depends on the severity of the needs. There's some campuses that we manage where they are full-time. There's some where they're part-time.
Okay. Who will be responsible for students' IEPs? So what staff will be, and if you can list by the title that you would give these staff members and their duties that they would be doing?
We would have a, we have a sped director. We do have specific sped teachers and the, their paras that are responsible for that. Ultimately, the buck stops with the, the school director, the principal. But, but the whole sped department would be responsible for that, and in conjunction with the teacher, making sure that any IEPs or 504 plans are being followed as well.
Okay, so that was the next question. So the special education teachers would be responsible for 504 plans?
Depending on the level of 504.
Okay. Where in the application do you identify a special education curriculum or program?
I don't. Again, that would be more specified in the curriculum maps that we will, I'm assured we will be providing you.
Who will conduct the evaluations and reevaluations of students with suspected disabilities?
The sped team.
And who would make up that sped team that would do that?
The, the sped director. In conjunction with the school principal as well, would have oversight on that, but the sped director of the school. And then depending on the, the student in the grade, depending on the cohort of that grade level, the sped teachers of that grade level.
Okay, thank you. Where in the application do you include how you will conduct functional behavior assessments of students that have behavioral needs?
Just to go back a couple of questions, when you were talking about the sped team or the IEP team, that IEP team is going to be, it's going to be comprised of the student, special ed, special education teacher, a member of the administration, and either an advocate of the, an advocate for, a parent, or both. So we'll, you know, we want to make sure that, that it's on the record that, that parents or advocates of that student will be part of that IEP plan. In regard to your, the, you know, we will have a multidisciplinary evaluation team that works directly with the IEP team when it comes to children with multiple disabilities.
Okay. Okay. So in the application, I, I had asked a question about a functional behavior assessment. Who would be conducting those for students that would have behavioral needs?
That would, that would fall on either the IEP or the MET.
Okay. Where in the application do you provide information regarding assistive technology for students who need special education programming?
If it's not in there, it's because it's a very specific question, and we can get that to you with regards to the, the, the specifics of that. I don't even, I don't believe that I was asked for the application.
Who would be responsible for monitoring students' progress within MTSS, which stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support?
The MT, let's see, the MTSS, CPA qualified instruction considered that tier one. Typically, what we're talking about there are students that are struggling and need that support. Tier two will be engaged, and then tier three finally, and tier four. All schools must have an MTSS in place, as, as will the PMCS at Valley Forge. Charter One will provide a copy of their standard MTSS, and then we'll adjust it as necessary for the specifics of the child.
There's also campus, campus-appointed, the campus director appoints MTSS leaders, depending on different grades, and they'll be responsible.
Okay. How will you accommodate students with disabilities using a military training model?
Every effort will be made to include all students. At the end of the day, there are certain limitations that are going to happen just based upon the individual students. We will work closely- We will work closely with that IEP, we'll work very closely with the MET team, we'll work very closely with all educators to find ways that we can be inclusive of all students in all activities.
I'd like to add too, that this may be their only opportunity to do so in this environment.
Where in the application do you discuss how a SAP or a student assistance program will be implemented?
Is that, for, are we still on, forgive me, sped, are we talking about?
No, this is, student assistance programs and the SAP team are people that get together and look at students. And it's, it's all students. It's not just students that have already been identified.
Okay, and so then your question was?
How you, yeah, the question is how would a student assistance program be implemented? And is it discussed in the application?
Is this like a corporate EAP program? Does this, does this provide support programs and for students if they're having emotional issues or family issues?
So it's, it's more of a, of a team that gets together and works together on helping students academically, emotionally, behaviorally?
Let's, I believe that, I believe that it'd be made up of the IEP, the MET, and the MTSS.
Okay.
But it extends beyond just the IEP and 504 plans. It's, it's something that's available to the entire student body, correct? Is that how you're?
SAP teams, yes.
Yes, okay, so those services would be made available.
Okay. Where in the application do you discuss how a student attendance improvement plan will be implemented?
I don't think we've got that specifically listed in the charter. That's something that will work hand in hand between the student, the parent or the representation, the representative or a, and the faculty.
Okay. And finally, where in the application do you discuss a comprehensive student threat assessment guidelines? We call it C-STAG. How will that be implemented within, within your school?
We'll be in compliance with all state and federal requirements on the C-STAG. It hasn't been fully implemented yet as we don't have, you know, we, number one, we don't have a charter. Number two, we don't have an exact layout of the infrastructure of the school. But once all of that is analyzed, that C-STAG will be produced.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Brian Pauling and the business administrator for the district. How did you arrive at the figure in your application for the cost for administrative personnel?
Based on local historical data and then also data that we have from the other schools that we've managed.
How did you arrive at the figure in your application for the costs for all special education teachers, staff, and related service providers?
Same answer.
Who's responsible for making budget determinations regarding teachers and staff?
The board of directors.
Sorry, could you please enter that with the microphone?
The board of directors.
What are the qualifications for the person handling budgeting?
We'll be, we'll be utilizing, you know, budgeting expertise coming from charter one. And if there's an additional need, we'll, we'll hire on either, hire as a FTE or potentially 1099.
We do have, we do have the full, what's the word I'm looking for here? It's the, not the course description, but the, the title, the individual that we're looking for for that, that would run the budgets. We have the full course description that would require that we could send to you, you know, minimum bachelor's degree and master's in finance, stuff like that. If you're talking more about qualifications, we have that.
Okay.
We could send you.
Did you include a teacher's salary matrix as part of your application?
If it was asked for, yes. If not, we can get you one.
Is there documentation to support the fundraising expectations?
A document supporting the fundraising expectations?
Yes, or some justification?
That would be on a local basis with the board and local community members and local family members. Also depending on the needs and we're very, not only are we very mission-driven, but we're also very, even fundraiser-driven. What would, what, we're not just raising money to raise money. What is this raising money for? Is this, so it's very specific, very localized.
Okay, so what methodology did you use for what you included in your application?
Is it?
There was a dollar amount, so I'm getting it to how did you determine that?
What's the dollar amount?
I don't have that handy, but it's.
So those numbers came off of, came off of estimations based off of other charter schools that charter one has supported and what we assume may happen here. It's an estimation.
Okay. What type of medical benefits are you offering to the staff?
Those will, will obviously be in compliance with all state and federal laws.
Okay. Is the charter school participating in the Pennsylvania State Educational Retirement System and will staff members be eligible for PESER's benefits?
Yeah, it's an option for the, for the individual.
So you are offering that as an option?
I'm sorry, I didn't get an answer?
Yes. Your staffing costs decreased from year one to two, including a reduction in two school leader positions. Is this accurate?
I would need to take a look at that. Is that mentioned in the budget?
According to the numbers, it is.
Okay, I would need to look at that.
How is inflation and other increases in costs factored into the future budget years?
Specific just to teachers, Brian, or?
There were quite a few line items in the budget that were flat funded over the five years in the expenditure category. So I'm wondering if any inflationary factors were considered as part of those numbers.
I think we want to take a look at those again.
Yeah, for clarity's sake, that budget is an estimate. We know that there's, there's going to be certain things that are going to change based upon, you know, the number of students we get, the, you know, current economics. There, we fully expect that there will be some minor changes to that, to that budget to account for this.
There was a category listed as other costs for a million dollars. What's included in those other costs?
Specifically included in that, in addition to the things that come up were any of the requirements that are going to, that, any of the transportation requirements, they're going to exceed the 10-mile radius for school districts.
And was that the only factor or were there others?
Let us get that list to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Where's the calculation showing the number of students at different local tuition rates for both regular and special education students?
The calculation specifically put input into the budget?
Yes.
I can get that to you.
Okay. How was the IDEA revenue calculated and justified?
That would be historical data that we've, we typically see from school to school, especially starting schools, based on our experience at charter one.
Okay, was that based on number of students or?
Roughly percentages, but then also you take a look at the local demographics and you take a look at local school districts and what they're doing.
How are fringe benefits for personnel calculated?
Could you be more specific with fringe benefits? I don't.
Social security taxes, other employer-related taxes? PESERs?
I believe there are line items already addressed in the, in the proposed budget. Are there not for social security and other costs?
They are, but they're inconsistent with the calculation that we would normally see.
Well, then we'd have to take a look at it at the end for you.
Okay. Will your cash flow statement spread all revenues and expenditures out flatly per month?
Trying to think of why it wouldn't. There could be some extraordinary.
Well, I think you're familiar with how school district cash flows work from, you know, it's usually, they're cyclicals. It's usually not a flat.
That's your reference, yes, okay. I don't know what we have in this budget. I think we have to take a look at it and make sure that it's consistent with what you would expect.
How will the $250,000 startup loan be secured and by what methods?
I believe that that would be through charter one.
What's your anticipated percentage of students that will qualify for free and reduced lunch?
Do you have that number?
Yeah. That's based off of, that's, you know, the historic, that, whatever, the typical demographic within the school districts that we're looking at, we'll base it off of those.
What is your expected budget for transportation costs?
Is that in the budget?
Yeah, I believe there was a $500,000 amount listed. So what is included in that budget? If there was a million for transportation costs and the other costs, then what would be included in the 500,000 specifically designated for transportation?
Buses, bus drivers. Maintenance, fuel.
And that's in addition to the million which you stated was in the other costs for transportation outside of the 10-mile radius?
Correct. Just remember that million dollars, that is unexample of what can be used with that million dollars. That doesn't, that's not a million dollars specifically for transportation plus 500,000. That's, that's money for overages.
Okay, that was the example that you gave when I had asked about that. So your budget includes $1,050,000 per year for health services. What's included in that line item?
Just a moment, please.
Sure.
All right, for that, the campus director will be responsible for staffing, the development for the use of medication.
Mr. Johnson, I'm so sorry, just slow down a little bit so we can hear you read that if, if you don't mind.
All right, so this is on page 93. Campus director will be responsible for the staff development and the use of medication and equipment assigned to the responsibility for the delivery of health services and the school placement of cadets within the medical needs. Specifically, the school nurse at PMCS will be able to conduct vision, hearing, hearing thresholds, dental and scoliosis screenings, as well as perform all cadet height and weight measurements annually, as is consistent with Pennsylvania regulations.
Thank you.
Also, as appropriate, this bleeds into sped as well, sped services.
Okay. All right, I'm going to pivot to some questions on insurance. Where in the application do you state what specific insurance policies or specific coverages will be obtained by a provider?
Any and all insurances that are required for us to have, we will have and we will take those to the market with charter one's buying power and ability to secure low interest rates for the board. We're confident that that'll be a, an added benefit of the relationship between us.
Okay. And where in the application do you include any commitments by an insurance company to provide the coverage?
We have not gone out to market yet for that, so there would not be any in there, I believe, unless there is.
I did not see them.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll pivot over to transportation. Where in your application do you discuss your plan for afternoon transportation for students who stay for after-school activities?
Those will mirror the, the post-school transportation policies of the surrounding school districts.
Does the school have sufficient transportation for athletic competitions with other schools?
They will, yes.
How will students who are not within the 10-mile radius zone or have access to public transportation get back and forth to the school?
You're saying they don't have access to buses?
I'm asking how you would transport students beyond the 10-mile radius or have access to public transportation. It was noted that there was potential for public transportation utilization in your application.
So I know that was part of that million-dollar expenditure is, any of the requirements are going to be above and beyond that 10-mile radius. We're looking at what that, what that's going to include and until we have an understanding of the number of students out there, that's a planning factor that, that we know exists, but we have not specified.
Okay.
Depending on where the students are located too, and depending on that 10-mile radius, the utilization of cluster stops beyond that mile radius too.
If some schools do not start until after Labor Day, how will those schools provide transportation if this charter school plans on beginning classes on August 5th?
So help, help clarify. We would be operating our own buses?
Not within the schools, within the 10-mile radius.
We, forgive me, we would not be operating our school buses outside of the 10-mile radius? Is that what you're?
No, what I'm asking is if the sending districts have to provide transportation within the 10-mile radius and you're planning on starting at the beginning of August and most schools don't go back, that's, that's going to be a difficulty for your sending school districts to provide additional staffing to handle that.
I don't believe that we're expecting the local school district to bus these students.
So August 5th is an estimated starting time. We'll, we'll have to take a detailed look at what the students that we're getting, the student population that we're going to getting from those school districts. If we have something that is outside of that, we'll, we can either find a specific contracted availability or potentially adjust our start date. Again, we don't have specific numbers from school districts and their start times yet, but as those numbers become more clear, that August 5th date can be adjusted.
Okay. So the application mentions a public transportation hub. So the application mentions a public transportation hub. What is the proposed address for this hub?
That is that is entirely dependent upon where those students are coming from. Without having without having clarified numbers, without having advertised this and started to actually pull in applications, that's a a broad statement of we will provide.
Okay. So what public transportation are you relying on and in what areas?
Again, that's totally determined on where those students are coming from.
So the application mentions a need to consolidate transportation to and from campus for efficiency while minimizing the impact of public traffic near the campus. Could you clarify what that means?
Utilizing carpooling and busing opportunities to eliminate carpool traffic and being mindful a mindful neighbor of those in the surrounding community as far as not backing up local streets.
Is the campus equipped to have approximately 1,000 students coming in in the morning?
Yeah, we believe it will, yes.
How do you plan to transport students with disabilities that are outside of the 10-mile radius?
We'll work with them on a case-by-case basis, whether a special bus is required or that is a case case-by-case basis.
Where in the application do you identify the amount of parking spots needed for teachers, staff, and students who drive?
Was that asked for in the application? But if you would like the answer to that question, we can get it for you.
Because the question is, is the is the facilities able to accommodate?
Correct, it is, yes.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Bill Dolan. I'm the Director of Operations. My questions center around facilities. What is the address of the charter school?
Currently, the address is my home. It will not be there. My wife won't allow it. If if you need me to, I can look up the actual address of the Valley Forge Military Academy. I don't have it on hand.
So Valley Forge Military Academy address?
Correct.
Okay. The only specific building mentioned in the application is Hart Hall, I believe. Is that correct?
If I recall, we specifically say that we will be leasing facilities from the Valley Forge Military Academy. Hart Hall, we believe, will be one of those, but as we get closer to this process, we'll specify exactly which buildings will be leased.
Okay.
And that's mentioned on page 70. The other potential areas, gymnasiums, field field usage, library, et cetera.
Okay. I have Hart Hall questions. Do you know Hart Hall's occupancy limit?
I did. It's more than 1,000.
Let's clarify that. We we expect to be able to lease enough facilities to equal that 975 students that we believe that we're going to be able to meet over the over the five years of enrollment. We will not exceed whatever the the, you know, local occupancy codes are, and if Hart Hall can meet our our needs initially, or if Hart Hall can meet our our needs throughout the duration of the school, then we're good there. But we do know that we've with the relationship we have with Valley Forge, that we have the ability to expand as necessary to meet those needs. We're basing our our lease off of 975 students.
How many restroom facilities available at Hart Hall, do you know?
I I don't have those numbers specifically. We do know that we'll be in compliance with with state and federal requirements.
Okay. More specific to that, in May of 2021, this board was told that Hart Hall wasn't ADA compliant. What work has been done on Hart Hall since May 2021 to make it ADA compliant? Do we know?
No work that we are aware of has been done as of yet.
Okay.
There's, as we have not entered into a lease, we are making no demands upon Valley Forge Military Academy. Once a lease is secured, then that lease will include the requirements to be in compliance with ADA.
Okay. On page 72 of the application, it says that we'll offer tours in the facility as soon as we receive a certificate of occupancy after construction is complete. Can you explain what construction we're referring to?
Yeah, that's any construction required to bring the buildings within code.
Okay. Who is paying for the construction?
That is a good question. We are leasing facilities from Valley Forge Military Academy. However they get those facilities up to code is on them.
Okay. Do you know when construction would begin?
Do you know when we're going to get approved?
Fair enough. Have all necessary approvals for this construction been received?
Not yet.
Yeah. Have contractors been identified, and if so, have you entered into a contract with the work?
No.
No and no.
No, no, no.
We may be able to eliminate some of those questions by saying none of that will be done until a charter is approved and a lease is secured.
Does the application contain a copy of a lease or a letter of intent from Valley Forge Military Academy, or any other landlord committing to lease any space to PMCS?
I don't believe it provides a letter of intent, but that's something that we could get if necessary.
Will the lease premises be exclusively used by PMCS students?
Yes.
What is your projected rent ranging from three to 3.2 million based upon? And what is the rent number based upon?
Yeah. It's an estimate based off of the total student, total student enrollment, not to exceed 20% of revenue.
Okay, thank you. Who is responsible for maintenance costs in the agreement?
Our landlord.
Can you please just make sure that?
Landlord.
Thank you.
Landlord. Who is responsible for the ADA compliance?
The landlord.
Do you plan to seat the entire charter school population at one lunch seating? So for cafeteria?
If the demand is there, yes.
Okay.
Did you ask if we plan on seating the entire 975 students at one time?
The charter school population, so yes.
Okay. We don't believe that facilities that will be leased will be able to seat that many, but we're going to have to take a look at it. If until we have a necessity to go to a scheduled lunch break, then we'll be able to use the existing or the what we or what we suspect will be able to lease as far as dining facilities.
Okay, so following up on that, how would this work with the existing Valley Forge Military Academy and PMCS students also needing to eat?
There will have to be deconfliction. We don't know what that looks like until we've been approved.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that word, de-something?
Deconfliction?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is deconfliction not not routinely used in the education system? Okay. You know, it is it is interesting that military language and civilian language can be so close, yet so far away.
All right. Good evening. Scott Hand, Director of Technology Innovation Instructional Design for the school district. I'll start with some technology questions that I have. Can you please share where in your application you describe what technology will be offered to students?
Can you be more specific as to what technology you're asking about?
Student technology.
Like what, Chromebooks or?
Yes, any, correct. What are you offering to students for technology?
I'm not sure that's specified in the in the application. We do know that we'll have a requirement. There will be requirements for students to have access to technology, and we do have a plan, and we will have a plan in place to make sure that those students have that access.
Okay.
We typically run a one-to-two ratio of Chromebook to students. The goal is to not have students go home with Chromebooks, though. We don't encourage that.
Okay, so one-to-two as one device for every two students? Okay, thank you. Does your application contain a line item for technology in the budget?
It should.
There is a line item for IT services.
Can you please share the page number?
It is page four of Appendix D. When you look in the first first section, IT services, and then when you look at supplies and material.
It's under supplies and materials too.
Yep. Yeah, student laptops, facility laptops. So under contracted services and then under supplies and material.
Okay, thank you. Will any of the technology infrastructure or services, such as internet, be shared with the VFMA?
No.
So will you maintain separate infrastructure in a shared space for the two different schools?
Shared spaces are.
Say Hart Hall, shared space.
It will not be co-located.
Are you asking if we're going to have a separate internet service provider than?
Internet service, network, infrastructure, wireless access within a shared space.
It would all be separate. It's very likely that the the students wouldn't even be in the same buildings, the academy and the charter school.
That that's a good question. I think we're going to have to do some research into that as to as as we're going to be leasing facilities. If if there's specific infrastructure that's that's, you know, tied to those buildings, that's going to have to be on a shared basis, but it's not. We have no plans to share any of our programs or any of that with Valley Forge Military Academy, so.
Separate firewall.
Yeah, separate firewalls and and all of that.
Okay. And do you know how much that will cost to create and maintain that separate infrastructure?
We have an estimation.
It's going to be in the budget.
Based based off of page four that we talked about, the IT services, that's what we're estimating.
For startup, not for ongoing IT service costs? To establish that infrastructure?
Correct. If you want an ongoing budget, year-over-year, we can get that to you.
Okay, but you're saying page four is just the startup costs?
Page for the denim, that's the startup budget.
Year two through five, yeah.
Okay. Shifting focus to the academic calendar, can you please share who developed the academic calendar?
Yeah, we worked in conjunction with the board, Charter One Student Services Team. The Student Services Division helps us create the calendar along with the academic team, the SPED team, and the the board as well.
Thank you. Can you please share how many total student days you have and how many total staff days you have?
I don't have it memorized. We can count real quick. Is it in the? Page 60, or forgive me, page, yeah, page 60. School calendar must include 990 hours or 180 days of instruction.
So you're saying the?
That's what we'll have.
You will have 180 student days. Do you know how many staff days?
190.
190? Thank you. Question on the bell schedule. The information concerning the bell schedule appears to be somewhat contradictory. In one place on page 32, it states that class periods will be 55 minutes long. In another place on page 32, it states periods will be 65 minutes long. And on page 33, it states there are two 90-minute periods. However, the bell schedule on page 32 has periods that are 5, 15, 75, and 85 minutes long. There are no 55, 60, or 90-minute periods that exist. Can you explain what the actual bell schedule will look like?
We need the microphone for the court stenographer. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I think we have to get back to you on that rather than trying to take the three separate set of data and come to one answer right now.
So on page 33, when it talks about the bell schedule, it says it provides the following average instructional minutes for the corps. As we're looking at those averages and we define, you know, we clarify what our schedule is going to be, those were put in there, again, as an average, and as the as the as the curriculum is finalized and determined, we'll have an exact bell schedule prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Dan Backtold, Assistant to the Superintendent for District Management. I have, I'll start off with questions related to personnel. Could you please identify who has been retained or hired to run the school?
We intend to contract with Charter One as our ESP.
Where in the application does it identify the number of teachers by certification area?
Just by grade.
We have not identified teachers by certification area, we've just done it by grade. We are capable of flexing on that as necessary.
And the, it's also pages seventy-eight into the nineties also talks about the different types of employees that will be working at the school and the level of credentials and certifications that they'll need to.
Thank you. Will all PMCS teachers be certified to teach by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Quick question, does the, does state law require that?
Yes, so our teachers are required to be certified by the state of Pennsylvania.
Okay.
How do you plan to ensure that certifications are valid and current?
We have systems and processes and procedures in place where the director of the school on annual or semi-annual basis reviews where everyone's at with their certifications and their recertification process.
How many hours a day will teachers at PMCS work?
You know, I'm, I'm gonna lean on our, our experience at, at our other campuses where they are, they're contracted to start thirty minutes before school and, and, and they finish thirty minutes after school ends. So, roughly eight, eight and a half. But whatever's required by the state as well.
Yeah, we will not exceed any requirements. We'll be in compliance with the state and federal laws. We won't, we won't expect teachers to work over what is required by the state.
How many class periods per day will a teacher provide instruction?
I suppose that depends on, on whatever that's, that particular teacher is instructing. As it's gonna be an A and B day, I think that's gonna change. But again, we'll be in compliance with, with state and federal laws.
Also, every teacher... Every teacher as well has, has the prep period. So, if they're teaching A, B day or not A, B day, if they're teaching six periods a day or seven periods a day, then they'll have six periods and a prep period or, or five periods and a prep period.
All right, thank you. Have you hired any individuals for your administrative, instructional, or non-instructional staff positions yet?
Not yet.
What are the qualifications for the person overseeing human resources for PMCS?
That person, if, if the charter gets approved, they'll contract with Charter One, who has a full HR department, and we have a, a department head within the HR department, and we can give you those qualifications and certifications and what that person needs to hold. We can get that to you.
What is your timeline for hiring for PMCS?
I, go ahead.
We won't be conducting any hiring until the, our charter has been approved. Once the charter's been approved, we will look at the expected number of students that we have and then hire according to that. We will be staffed to meet the student demands for the, for the school year.
Do you plan on hiring your own lunchroom staff?
It depends. We will look at it and what's in the best interest for the school's bottom line. Some managed chartering schools do so, and some we, we contract that out.
Who is responsible for day-to-day personnel issues that occur at PMCS?
Day-to-day issues would be the school director.
Is there a plan to share staff with Valley Forge Military Academy, and will there be an opportunity for dual employment?
I don't believe so, but I would let the board speak to that more.
The answer to that is no. We do not have any plans to share staff outside of what would be normal on a tenant landlord agreement.
All right, I'm gonna shift into nondiscrimination questions. Does PMCS have a dress code that differentiates between male and female students?
We will.
Will PMCS permit transgender students to follow the dress code for the gender they identify with?
Our plan is to treat students administratively based upon the gender of their birth certificate.
Does Valley Forge have any gender-neutral bathrooms on campus?
As we have not secured a lease, I can't answer that definitively. What I will say is part of the, the lease agreement will be to have those available.
How will PMCS accommodate transgender students in regards to bathrooms?
Going back to the earlier statement, students will, will be administratively handled in accordance with the gender based on their, on their given birth certificate. If, oh, sorry, pardon me. If there are specific needs, we will address those on a case-by-case basis, and we will provide facilities that, that will allow for the privacy that the individual students require.
Will PMCS monitor bathrooms to ensure that students only use the bathroom that is on their birth certificate?
No more or less than any other typical school, that's no, I'm, no.
Logistically, how does PMCS plan to ensure that students use the proper restrooms? Will staff be provided with students' full, a list of students' full names and genders to ensure they can maintain compliance with restroom restrictions?
That will be dealt, dealt with on a case-by-case basis and the specific needs of that specific student.
What consequences would a transgender student face at PMCS for using the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity instead of the one that is on their birth certificate?
We would need to take a look at the conduct and consequence matrix, and it's laid out in the conduct and consequence matrix.
Will PMCS require students to change out of their uniform for physical education?
Depending on the grade level. Once you hit high school, yes.
Will you have separate locker rooms for male students and female students?
Yes.
Are there any general, gender-neutral locker rooms available at Valley Forge for transgender students?
If, if there's a, if there's a, if they're required, yes.
On page sixteen of your application, under military culture, it states, "Communication will always include a standard military salutation or courtesy, for example, the usage of yes, sir, or no, ma'am. In December of 2022, the Marine Corps announced they will discontinue the use of yes, sir, and no, ma'am, to ensure that soldiers do not misgender superiors." Will PMCS follow suit to respect the gender identity of PMCS employees?
That policy has been reported to the Marine Corps as a potential. I don't think that, I don't believe that that has been fully enacted. I do know that the other services continue to use gender-specific titles. Our plan is to, is to follow that, the example set by DOD.
Does PMCS intend to provide instruction to teachers and students concerning diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Yes.
Is that referenced in the application?
I'm not sure, I'd have to get back with you on that. We, we know that we plan to be in compliance with, with state and federal requirements, and if there's specific school district requirements, we could be in compliance with those, we will be in compliance with those as well.
How much money has PMCS earmarked for diversity, equity, and inclusion work in their budget?
That has not been identified yet.
All right, I'm gonna transition to extracurricular activities. Does PMCS plan to participate in the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association?
I, I don't know if we've specifically identified that, but I can't see why we would not.
Does your application address how you plan to accommodate for lost instructional time for student athletes with such a late school dismissal time?
That hasn't been specified. We'll work with it.
Does your application address how you plan to compete against other schools in the PIAA if no practices, competitions, et cetera, happen after 5:20 PM each day as referenced on page fifty of your application?
Your microphone is off, sir, just as a reminder.
I turned it off for a moment.
Just to clarify, the question is, what about games and activities that would happen after 5:20?
Does your, yeah, does your application address how you plan to compete against other schools in the PIAA if no practices, competitions, et cetera, happen after 5:20 PM each day?
It doesn't go into the specifics of that in the application. What it would do, it'd be sport-by-sport basis if it's, you know, if we end up fielding a football team. Obviously, football is Friday night at seven o'clock and we're not gonna... So, so we're flexible with regards to the, the performances of, of what's standard in the area. What, what we're trying to do with that 5:20 PM is, is, is respect to some of the family time and the students' time with regards to getting back home and not spending all day at school every day. That was the intent of that.
Thank you. Does PMCS plan on following PIAA rules and regulations?
Yes.
Will PMCS allow transgender athletes to compete in accordance with their gender identity as permitted by the PIA?
In accordance with all state and local requirements, yes.
Can you please identify what clubs students at PMCS will be permitted to participate in?
Those are based on interest, those are based on desire and student interest. There, there's not a set slate, so it would base student interest, parent interest, and the ability for the school to, to accommodate those.
Would PMCS permit a student who identifies as LGBTQ+ to create a sexuality and gender alliance club for LGBTQ+ students and their friends to meet, discuss issues of importance to the group, do charitable works, and other service projects?
Any extracurricular or team club or after-school activity that is sponsored by the school needs to have an academic purpose, and so that club would have to prove the academic purpose behind that, and it would be approved.
Thank you. My name's Michael Kristofka, I'm the solicitor for the Radnor Township School District. I have some additional questions, some follow-up from some of the answers given and some additional questions. First off, before I get started, Mr. Way, could you please let us know what your position is and, and your background?
Yes, I am the closest Charter One employee as of right now to, to this area. I am out of North Carolina, I'm the South, I'm the East Division President for Charter One and manage all of the schools that are under our purview in states such as North Carolina, South Carolina, Florida, and potentially Pennsylvania. Some of my background, you want me to go into some of my background?
Yes, please.
I attended law school, I got my law degree and my MBA at the University of Wyoming, my undergraduate degree at Arizona State in construction management. I've been in the charter school industry, I'm a charter school graduate from high school. Been, been in the charter school industry since, since attending undergraduate school. And upon graduation several years ago out of law school and MBA, took this opportunity to assist Charter One in the growth and management of the East Coast.
I'm gonna come back to some questions, some more detailed questions about Charter One, but before I, I forget, during one of the answers, there was a reference made to a conduct and consequences matrix?
Yes, sir.
What page is that on?
That will be provided, we can provide that to you. I don't, if it's not in here specifically, it's because it wasn't asked for, but we can provide that to you.
Let me show you a, a document. This is gonna be another exhibit, we're gonna mark this as Exhibit Seven. I just have a couple of questions for you about, or I'm sorry, Exhibit Nine. I have a couple of questions for you about this. So, in, in preparing for tonight's hearing, I noticed that there was a website set up for the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge, and that's a printout of, of the website. Are you familiar with this website?
We know the website, uh, we know that the website was in, in the process of being set up, I did not realize it had come out as soon as it did.
Who's responsible for putting out the content in the website?
We have a consultant we're working with right now.
Is there any kind of an agreement between the Board of Trustees and the consultant as to what his duties are?
Not, not specified by document, no.
The, the website says Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge is a tuition-free public charter school coming to the Wayne area in the fall of 2024. That's the, the very first sentence. Why has a website been put out implying that the charter's already been granted?
I, I, I think we got a little overzealous in that.
If you look at the, it's join our interest list, I mean, for all intents and purposes, as of right now, it's, we're, we're pushing towards that date. As you know, there's other avenues to get this approved as well. And so, advertising towards the public and getting the interest list up, the goal for us is to bring this to the families for 2024.
Was Charter One involved at all in creating the website?
I'm trying to look at this because we, we do manage multiple websites, and I'm not seeing any of the stock photos or, or some of the photos from the other schools that we use, but, and I'm not pulling up the website, the website isn't loading for me for some reason. But I can confirm with you whether our marketing team and our IT team were able to put kind of the beginnings of a, of a webpage together to, to determine interest in the area.
On page two, under specialized military training for all interests, a number of items are, are listed as, it says Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge will prepare students for the United States Service Academies while offering specialized training in the following areas. There are two areas here, marksmanship and ethical hacking, which were not mentioned in the application.
Okay.
Are they areas that, in fact... Are they areas that, in fact, the Pennsylvania Military Charter School will be planning to offer?
If the demand is there, we would move forward with that. Now, if this is a significant change to a charter or something that we would need to make known or get approval to change with regards to the curriculum, then we would come before this board to do that.
So with respect to marksmanship, will students actually be filing, firing weapons on campus?
The expectation is that students will have the opportunity to practice marksmanship training that will include firing of weapons. We have not identified the exact caliber of those weapons. We do know that there is a facility that is potential for the lease, potential within the lease. I'm not sure what caliber that range is certified to. We will take a look at what the exact laws within Pennsylvania and within this area are, but the expectation is yes, students will receive marksmanship training.
What grades?
Hasn't been specified yet. I don't believe that we're going to go below probably 8th grade, but I don't have that exact answer right now.
And can you explain exactly what is ethical hacking?
Ethical hacking is a broadly-based term that talks about some of the cybersecurity requirements that are emerging. Ethical hacking essentially is what we would call a red cell activity, meaning, hey, we are looking, we are teaching students to have the potential to look for vulnerabilities within an organization that has hired them to do so.
So, I have a couple of questions about some statements in the application that I'm looking for some clarification on. On page 61, the administrative leadership team is defined as including the Director of Operations and the Director of Academics. And then on page 62, it says that the Board of Trustees will hire and evaluate the school director and business manager or service providers performing similar functions. So which is it? Are you going to be hiring individuals, or are you going to be hiring service providers?
I believe that depends on what happens once the charter is approved. I think what our intention there was to provide us some leeway, that if we enter into a contract with a school provider that meets all of those requirements, we can do that. If the contracts that we develop don't meet those, then we have the potential to hire.
Have you received any proposals from service providers as of yet?
No.
Have you identified any candidates for Director of Operations or Academics or Business Manager yet?
No.
On page 67, it says PMCS will develop a full business plan once its charter is authorized. I read that as indicating that you have not yet developed the full business plan. Is that accurate?
I believe that's an accurate statement, yes.
On page 69, it says the PMCS business manager or contracted educational service provider will establish one or more bank accounts with mutually acceptable financial institutions, which you reference as operating accounts. And then it says the business manager or designated ESP employee will cause all gross revenues to be deposited into the operating accounts and cause all operating expenses to be paid out of the operating accounts for and on behalf of the school. So the question I have for you on this is, who's actually going to be handling the money? Is it going to be an employee of the charter school, or is it going to be an educational service provider?
Both. So when it comes to Charter One-managed organizations, the business manager, the individuals in the finance department would have that ability to be able to, designated by the school, but then also the office manager or business manager in this sense would have that ability as well.
So you had mentioned several times that no lease has been executed yet with Valley Forge Military Academy. The actual application, the only, the only building by name mentioned is Hart Hall. You mentioned some potential facilities, but Valley Forge Military Academy is a very large campus with a number of different buildings on it, and there's no letter of intent indicating what the material terms of a lease would be. First, let me ask you, have you negotiated all of the material terms of a lease with Valley Forge Military Academy as of this point?
We have not.
Okay. One of the things that this school board is-
Just wanted to make sure that, again-
We have not.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the things that this school board is being tasked with the responsibility to do in evaluating the charter application is determine if the facilities are appropriate for the school. How is the school board supposed to determine if the facilities are appropriate when you yourselves don't even know what those facilities will be yet?
So we've had the opportunity to go and look at the facilities and have a conversation with the staff at Valley Forge Military Academy. We've looked at what is potential and what they say they can provide. Based upon the things that they say they provide, we feel that that is going to be an appropriate facility for this charter school.
Okay. My specific question was, how is the board supposed to evaluate whether the facilities are sufficient and appropriate if they haven't been identified and as of right now, you can't identify what they are?
So we have looked at the facilities that Valley Forge says, have said will become available or can become available. Based upon those, we feel like we can, we'll be able to specify the exact buildings that we need, and then as that happens, enter into a contract to secure those.
But that won't happen until after a charter would be approved?
Absolutely. We're not going to enter any contracts until a charter has been approved.
So if the charter is approved, would Valley Forge Military Academy cease operations?
I don't, I won't work for Valley Forge Military Academy. That's not a decision that the Pennsylvania Military Charter School will make.
Well, the plan in the, in the application it has set forth is to use facilities of Valley Forge Military Academy, including things such as the cafeteria facilities, the library. Are you planning to use the nurses' facilities that they have?
We plan on entering into a contract to meet the facility requirements that the Pennsylvania Military Charter School will need.
So if the Valley Forge Military Academy is going to continue to be operating, there will necessarily be instances where the students are in the same buildings together and maybe even in the same facilities together, correct?
Sir, I am not at liberty to talk about what Valley Forge Military Academy plans to do in the future. I can tell you that we plan on having facilities that are separate from any other entity, and as the Valley Forge Military Academy is our intended landlord, we will make all appropriate leases necessary to ensure that.
How many cafeterias are at Valley Forge Military Academy?
I don't know specifically.
There is a chapel facility located at Valley Forge Military Campus. Will that be leased as part of the lease agreement that the Pennsylvania Military Charter School is looking at?
We don't anticipate renting a chapel, no.
Without the actual lease in front of us, though, there's no way for this board to determine whether that will or won't be leased.
We can, as a public charter school, we can confirm-
Microphone, please. I'm sorry, these are-
As a public charter school, we can confirm that they will, they will not lease church facilities.
Now, I have a couple of questions about Charter One's involvement. One of the public comments before this hearing began indicated that, based on a newspaper article, that Charter One actually approached you, Mr. Johnson, about starting this school. Is that accurate?
No, that's, that's, that's slightly inaccurate. A consultant that is interested in this program approached me and said that there is a joint, there is a joint interest from Charter One to be involved in this, and then asked if I would be willing to serve as a board member.
Okay. The, there are a couple of places in the charter application where it implies that no education service provider has yet been selected. For example, on page 74, it says PMCS will select an ESP that has a demonstrated history of hitting enrollment targets and filling schools they manage to capacity. Similarly, on page 78, it says PMCS will place a high level of emphasis on ESPs that have proven success with socio-economically disadvantaged cadets evidenced by factors including high performance at Title I designated campuses, Title I designated campuses. So is, has, has an ESP, has Charter One actually been selected as the ESP at this point?
No contracts have been made by the Board of Directors with any ESP at this time.
So the level of services that Charter One would provide to Pennsylvania Military Charter School have yet to be formally agreed to or fleshed out?
No contracts have been established.
On page 89 of the application, it says the OMCS Governing Board, the selected educational service provider, and the selected school developer will work hand-in-hand to complete all tasks necessary to guarantee PMCS's pre-opening process is handled competently and that the school opens on schedule. What does OMCS mean? That's page 89.
I believe that's a typo. That's supposed to be the PMCS Governing Board, and then the selected educational service provider will then work hand-in-hand. So what, the reference there is the PMCS.
Okay.
That's just a typo.
Okay. And who is the selected school developer?
It is anticipated that that will be Charter One.
But no, no agreements have been entered into as of this time?
No. No agreements have been entered at this time.
Okay. And so, so correct me if I'm wrong, if the board approves this charter, the very next day Charter One could walk away and say they're not interested, and they would not be in breach of any contractual arrangement with the Pennsylvania Military Charter School?
We have not entered into any agreements at this time.
Has there been any financial arrangements or terms discussed between Charter One and the Pennsylvania Military Charter School?
There have been discussions so that the board can make an appropriate decision.
Okay. And how much will the Pennsylvania Military Charter School pay Charter One for whatever services ultimately are agreed to be provided?
It is anticipated that we'll pay what's listed in the budget.
And that's, is that a million dollars a year?
I believe, but I'm not, I'm not sure right off the top of my head.
Okay. Is Charter One a for-profit company?
Yes.
Okay. And you had indicated that you were the closest Charter One employee to Pennsylvania, and that you were from North Carolina, I believe?
Currently, yes.
Okay. What, in what states does Charter One manage charter schools?
Currently, North Carolina, South Carolina, Florida, Nevada, Arizona.
Is there any employee of Charter One that holds any Pennsylvania teaching or supervisory certificate through the Pennsylvania Department of Education?
Not yet. Sir, if we can go back to one of your previous questions?
Sure.
It's anticipated that 6% of the operating fee will be provided to the ESP.
So 6% of revenues will be provided as a management fee?
It's anticipated.
Okay. Can you explain the corporate structure for Charter One for me, please?
To what degree? Just the organizational chart?
Well, you had mentioned that Charter One operates a number of different schools. Are all of those schools under contract with Charter One? Are they owned by Charter One?
Charter One doesn't own any schools. Charter One is simply the service provider for those schools. The boards hold the charter for all of those schools. The boards contract with Charter One to run the day-to-day operations of those schools. Charter One is, name a department, and you need to run a school, and we've got it. Academics, Department of Finance, Legal, Compliance, HR, IT. We have close to 150 employees across the nation.
Now, on the Charter One website, about, I don't know, half the schools or most of the schools are listed as American Leadership Academy schools?
Yes.
And can you explain what that means?
That's the name of the schools. That's the brand of the schools. That is the flagship brand that Charter One operates. Charter One grew out of American Leadership Academy.
Explain what you mean by that.
American Leadership Academy started in Arizona, and the demand grew such that other individuals in other states were asking for similar K-12 models. And in order to promote the American Leadership Academy model, Charter One was developed, created, to where we were able to cross state lines and offer similar services in a K-12 model. And since then, we have managed schools from the ground up. We have acquired acquisition schools, boards that were struggling, with schools that were struggling, whether it was academically or financially, they asked us to step in and assist them, and so we go where we're wanted, and it's evident by the different states that we're operating in.
Now, with respect to the Board of Trustees for the charter school, will the board be paid?
The board will not be paid. I can let them confirm that.
We will not be paid.
Okay. And what was the process for identifying board members?
As the discussion about submitting this application came about, we looked at several people that had an interest. We looked for those that had experience in a military school. We looked at those that had military experience, and we're looking for those that have experience within the charter schools. The intent was to get a diverse board, or a board with diverse experiences, enough that, enough that we'll be able to answer the questions that come about. We'll be able to problem-solve the questions that'll come about with running the Military Charter School.
How many, how many total board members are there currently?
Five.
And are there any open slots for board members?
We haven't, we haven't determined the exact number. We, the estimation is as little as three, as high as seven.
How long does each member serve?
Hasn't been specified yet.
How are new members selected?
Hasn't been specified yet.
Has there been any effort to identify female candidates to join the board?
Yes, there have been efforts. I'm actually currently in conversations with a couple of female retirees that I know to see if there's any interest in that. There, there is an expectation that the, the perspective that a female board member will bring will be beneficial to the board.
Do any of the members of the Board of Trustees have any experience as a professional educator?
As of now, no.
Let me just, I don't know what you're, you're determined is professional. I had three years' assignment in a corporate learning environment, fully certified by middle states. I taught finance for AT&amp;T.
Was that in, was that in a Pennsylvania public school environment?
It was not.
And was that teaching-
It was a corporate learning environment.
A corporate learning environment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was the, my last duty assignment in the military was the advanced skills, advanced skills company's firm major that's equal to the Director of Learning and Development. I have been the Director of Learning and Development for a corporation, and I've been the Senior Vice President of Learning and Development for a consulting firm.
So, do any of the board members currently live in Radnor Township or Tridifern Township?
No.
Okay. Or, can you explain what the connection is that each of the board members has to this area?
I think our connection is more along the lines of finding the appropriate facilities that can house the Military Charter School that we're looking to enact.
Of the current members of the Board of Trustees, can you explain to me where each of them resides?
I live in Carlisle, Pennsylvania.
I live in Montgomery County.
We've got Lenny McAllister that lives in Pittsburgh. I don't know the exact township out there, the Pittsburgh area. We've got a board member that lives in Gettysburg, and then another board member that lives in Utah.
Okay, and how often are board meetings held?
It hasn't been decided currently as we're going through this charter process. A lot more than my wife would like me to attend, but typically, we're meeting one to two times a week via Zoom.
And what process has been put in place for board members to be present at the charter when it's operational to observe and supervise what's occurring?
That'll be clarified as this gets approved. The intent is that the Board of Directors has a full understanding of the operations, daily, annually, and that we're working hard to direct the, you know, the trajectory of the school as it grows.
The budget that was presented indicates that, in the first year of operation, the school anticipates having 975 students.
We've amended that. We think that we can get 975 students, but we also have a backup budget that we can produce if you're interested in that, that has a five-year growth plan to meet that 975.
And can you just explain for us the efforts you undertook to determine the need in the area, or I'm sorry, the interest in the area that would support a school of 975 students?
We looked at the surrounding school districts. We looked at the availability of a program similar to this. We looked at the potential available space at Valley Forge Military Academy as the strong potential for where we will enact this charter.
And you're aware that Valley Forge Military Academy has current financial operating issues, correct?
I don't get involved in what Valley Forge Military Academy does. I talk to them about the potential of leasing facilities.
I'm not asking you if you're involved. I'm just asking you, are you aware that they're currently having financial operating issues?
I don't track what their finances are.
Okay. Are you aware that military academies across the country are closing due to financial constraints?
There's some information about that, yes.
Okay, and given that fact, what study or data do you have that suggests that there's such demand for military education that 975 children would go to this charter school?
It's a different model. Parents aren't paying private funds anymore. It's a public model.
Is that it?
Mainly.
Okay. I don't have any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kristofko. Are there any board members of the board who have any additional questions which have not already been asked? Ms. Solomon?
I just have one, and it pertains to your class size comments. And it was very vague what your high school curriculum was going to look like to me, but do you have some idea of the minimum number of students you would require to run a course? So, say you're going to offer these, you mentioned the four tracks, firefighting and et cetera. Would there maybe be a point in time when there's not enough students in a particular class or track that you would not run it?
That is absolutely a possibility, for sure. And that's being able to be nimble and quick to determine what is the, what's in the best interest of the school. And then also, if only two students want to do the firefighter track, is that really a sustainable idea? Probably not. And so, being able to be nimble and move back and forth, we'll be able to make sure that the overall success and the overall offerings is what the school is desiring.
So, do you have a ballpark idea what a minimum floor would be to offer a course in high schools? My exact question.
When it comes to specific courses like AP World History or AP Calculus or stuff like that, it's definitely a different number than the actual track that we were talking about, those four tracks. So, those would be different numbers. So, when it comes to the classroom setting, it would be a much lower number. We could probably, I mean, we've ran some classes at eight, or nine, or 10 students per class.
Any other board members? Ms. Monahan?
With the idea that Charter One would provide this curriculum map that has been referenced before, does that include a military curriculum as well?
That would include the standard day-to-day curriculum. That would not include the specific military aspects. But we can include, we can include those, for sure.
So, if it doesn't, my question was, who's providing that curriculum? Like, the military component of the...
So, you're asking where we're going to specifically get the military-based curriculum? So, we're working with interested parties to come up with that. We haven't established, we don't have a contract in place to purchase a particular one. We're looking at that and trying to figure out what's going to best suit our needs.
Because it's my understanding Charter One does not have military-focused schools in your portfolio.
Let me comment on the military. Military has many connotations, or at least several connotations. I've graduated from Valley Forge. I'm not a soldier. They didn't make me a soldier. But I gained military discipline. I gained military rigor. I gained the commitment to team and to success. So, it's not always a written curriculum. It will be embodied in the treatment of the cadets and the day-to-day respect that they have for each other and for their instructors and so forth.
And please don't misinterpret what I'm saying. I was just curious as to knowing that this is a Military Charter application. My understanding of Charter One is that it's not, it's more the academics based on the curriculum map that you've been referencing. So, my question was, with, in addition to that information, where, like, who are you working with?
Yes.
Or where is that aspect of the education coming from?
So, that's great points made, and this would be a first for Charter One, which is what we're excited about, the opportunity to learn. And through different interested individuals throughout the state as well, they're looking at curriculum right now. Military schools in Colorado, other parts of the country as well that are using some of that, that, you know, we're somewhat of a young company to where we're able to adapt and a little more entrepreneurial-minded to where we can, we're excited about this opportunity, honestly, to be able to do this very innovative venture with this board. We're thrilled to even be considered as part of this opportunity. Did you want to say something too, Josh?
You know, it'll be the Board of Director that's ultimately, the Board of Directors that's ultimately responsible for coming up with exactly what that curriculum looks like. And we haven't clarified it exactly. We're in contact with several other military schools to see what they're doing and what looks right, so that we can meet the needs of our students as they come in.
Mr. Jubelier?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back, because maybe it hasn't been done yet. The question had been asked about interest and potential demand. Have you done any research into our local area? It seems like you've looked into the capacity of the facilities, which would be adequate, and you'd mentioned area student populations, I think, something to that effect. Have you done any, or would you, in the future, like, surveys, focus groups, to determine, sort of that marketing piece, to determine interest as opposed to necessarily just wherewithal?
Yes, 100%. And that's one of the areas that we're pretty proud about when it comes to our marketing arm. We just, five months ago, opened the two largest charter schools in North Carolina. 2,000 students, day one. We've got a pretty strong marketing arm. We've got, we know that there's a lot of pent-up demand here. That's why we're here. When it comes to info nights, we call them informational nights, where parents and students come, and they're able to see and tour, and see who their school leaders would be and their teachers would be. Welcome events, uniform nights, all of the above. Upon approval, would immediately be scheduled out in the calendar as well.
Jeff, that's a great point, because if you look at the 10-mile catchment area from Radnor, there's 20-some school districts represented. So, the demographics are going to be different, depending upon which school district. So, that's a very good point.
Mr. Kristofko?
Thank you. I had one follow-up, looking at my notes. Who was the consultant who approached you, Mr. Johnson, with this idea?
It's a gentleman named Matt Throckmorton.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions? I had one question. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned this was part of a joint venture, and I heard about a consultant, but I didn't hear about the other part of the joint. Could you elaborate on who the other party was?
So, we're having conversations with a lot of different organizations as we try to determine exactly what this school district, or what this charter school is going to look like. We've had conversations with, obviously with Charter One. We've had conversations with other military schools. We've had conversations with, you know, within the members of the board itself. And so, as we don't have any defined contracts as of yet, we don't necessarily have joint. I think that's probably a premature statement in when I said that.
It was about who approached you. You said it was a joint group that approached you. There was a consultant as part of a joint approach, and I just didn't hear who was joining with the consultant.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the name of the, there's an annual convention that has to do with charter schools, and based off of that convention, the initial conversation came out that referenced, I can bring that up for you right quick. It was listed in the... Give me just a moment here. All right, at the National Convention of Military Academies, the conversation grew, and that's where the introductions were made and the vision was crafted. So, when we're talking joint, there was a conversation with, between Valley Forge Military Academy that was, obviously, you know that they had interest in creating a charter school. They withdrew their charter, but that doesn't mean they don't have interest in a charter school happening. Obviously, they do, because they're willing to enter. If this gets approved, they're willing to enter into a contract to provide facilities for it. So, in between, you know, members of the school board that we've developed and the Charter One, and conversations with Valley Forge, this is where the idea came about.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the board who has any additional questions? Ms. Dunn?
I'm sorry, I'm a corporate attorney, so it always throws me when people don't have contracts to do things. The whole proposal, your proposal for a charter school talks about using the RACE program, which Mr. Way has already told us is IP of Charter One. Charter One apparently has all the curriculum maps in the background. You have no contract with them. They've sent Mr. Way here to do all this work with you, and there's no contract? I mean...
Pretty awesome, huh? That's how much we believe in it.
Okay, and it looks like you have the same web designer. That's a little interesting, too.
I need to pull that up. If you can show me that website, maybe after, because it's still not pulling up for me.
Okay. Look, I get that people do business without contracts. It's just...
Hey, as an attorney, too, yeah, it's a different world, isn't it?
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Kristofko? Okay, well, we've had an opportunity to ask all of our questions, so we are going to conclude the hearing on the charter school application submitted by the Pennsylvania Military Charter School at Valley Forge with this hearing. In accordance with the Charter School Law and Board Policy 140, the board will vote at an upcoming public meeting within the time limit set forth in the Charter School Law and Board Policy 140 on whether to approve the charter school application and adopt the recommendation of the District Administration. I want to thank everyone for their time and participation this evening. I will also now entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Ms. Solomon, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Stern, thank you. All in favor? All right, thank you. That's unanimous. The hearing is adjourned.